I'm gonna stick.
Turn on your microphone.
I'm turning on right now.
Are you worried for me?
Yeah. Oh, that's the do not advance. I was thinking, my God, no, we don't want, I was thinking we don't want that one, so.
Remember, she already has this life.
What?
She already has this life.
I know. I'm not saying anything.
I know. I was just.
Oh, okay, all right. Increasing funding for, increasing funding for public defense, you're gonna see.
That's probably because they got those new rules for your public defender. They can only take so many cases, so people are struggling to get a public defender.
Yeah, I think we kind of just talked before. You have it before, but then you wouldn't do that.
What's that whistle?
All, allows cities to request labor control board authorized libation zones in preparation for the 2026 World Cup.
Oh. Oh, really? No giggling in the background over there.
I haven't decided yet.
Okay. I haven't changed mine.
I know you haven't. You have, you have things to do, I don't, so. What?
I don't get one more thing of them for my work.
Well, because we pay all the utilities. We pay, we pay the thirty thousand, that costs us about thirty thousand dollars a year. We pay everything. They pay nothing. The maintenance and all of the bills, like electric and everything, yeah. We have for years.
Oh, you did?
That's why we, that's what, well, that's why we wanna sell it.
Yeah, exactly. Gotcha.
Yep, we do.
I wanted to see how much we're paying for out there.
Well, they're gonna be paying all that. The egg park. Well, we are, we're, the mayor and I are meeting with, with them on Friday at four o'clock. Yes, and, and they're gonna explain exactly. Here's my kid's dad. He was good looking.
Very nice.
He was good looking and just a bastard.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah.
He's very nice.
Oh, yeah, he was very handsome. What do you think attracted me? Then I learned, then I learned about him, you know, then I, then I grew up. Then I grew up, yeah.
Did you, did you end up divorced?
Oh, yeah, yeah. After I had four kids.
Oh, my.
I, I tell her, I told everybody I had four kids and I found out what was causing it and divorced him. Yeah. Yeah, I'm looking for that picture of my.
What was you looking for?
Picture of my sister that I took today. Oh, God, she looks so good. She'll be, she's ninety-three today. I should call her right now. Ninety-three.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, let me call her and tell her happy birthday.
Yeah, I told him I, yeah, I got that marked down for her.
Oh.
Okay, it is six thirty. A call to order the work session for the Tenino City Council Tuesday, February twenty-fifth. Okay, I have a few items since I just got back. I have some other items I've got listed here, but on the work session, we have permit penalty discussion with Dave Champagne. He's not here right now, so we'll see if he shows up for that. Council retreat, does anybody wanna talk more about that?
Well, I've already said what I wanna do, so.
Okay. Does anybody else have any thoughts they wanna share on that?
I mean, it's free.
What?
It's free.
Yeah.
So might as well.
I'm not for it.
Well, with the way the budget is, kinda have to at least get a good idea of what we're looking at for next year, next round of cuts.
Right, I have a concern about who we're having moderated. You know, the, the conflict we've had over the last year has pretty much been over Mr. Fornier's financial management of the city, and to have him moderating it, I, I'm, I anticipate conflict. You know, the purpose of this is to get together and try and smooth things out and come to agreement. I'm all for that retreat, but I'd like to, to have a neutral party for that, even if we have to pay a little bit for it.
Would anybody be interested if we disinvited the county manager versus?
I was just about to say that.
If he's one of us.
Yeah, we have the county manager. Doesn't have to be we, because they're both doing it for free.
Cause they're both what?
Doing the, doing the moderator for free.
At least the information we got initially was that they were both willing to do it for free, so I don't know if that would kind of be a middle ground that they could, we could still have some conversation. I don't know him real well. I had, perhaps.
Well, I've met him once or twice. I don't think any of us know him.
I have no idea who he is.
Yeah.
So you're gonna get ahold of him?
I can get ahold and see if he was willing to do that on his own.
He's a good guy. He's been doing a pretty good job for the county so far. He hasn't been there very long. He's new, but he's been doing relatively well.
I'd accept that as a, a middle ground compromise. I, I do, do think a retreat is important and something we need to do.
I'll reach out to him. I've gotta talk to him anyway, so I'll see if he's willing to, if he has a Saturday that he could come in and do that, and willing to do it for no cost.
He'll eat him cookies.
Yeah. Okay, that sounds reasonable. I'll just go over the stuff I had that has come up since I got back, and then we'll get back to the work session items for next meeting. I just wanted to let people know, I gave you that, the letter that I just gave you from George Sharp. This is kinda concerning the food bank. They are kinda running out of the space over here just to store stuff. I mean, I just talked to Jody today. They've had such a huge increase in demand. She says they had like ten additional families come in today for food that, above what they usually have, and that space isn't that big. It's, if you ever go in there, it's jammed. The old shop is open right now. There's nobody in there because of the zoning. You know, we had talked about in the past about selling that to them, but because of the zoning, they can't, it's probably, probably gonna be December before anything changes there. So we just had a discussion with their board about doing a lease, a low-cost lease for both the cold storage building and that other facility, and they would take over payments of the utilities and any maintenance on it, which cost us money, at least it has in the past. I mean, they basically cover the utility costs, but in the past, we've had to repair the freezers and some other things that, you know, were several thousand dollars. So what we discussed was a low-cost lease for probably maybe like five years, but have an option if they get the money to buy, buy if they can, if they can find the money, and be able to do, use that other building for storage. And then hopefully in December, if that zoning gets changed like they're planning on, we can look further into doing some kind of the purchase. I think they still, longer term, may have, wanna purchase it. So that was kind of the discussion we had with them. The other piece of it is their, their funding is, you know, with what's everything craziness is going on, the funding, they're still, she's telling me that there's organizations that provide food to them or that aren't getting funding right now just because of the, what's going on, so there's a lot of insecurity with this, what their future's gonna look like. So I just wanted to bring that up. If you have any questions or concerns, let's talk about them here, cause I would like to kinda get a, at least a first crack at an agreement with them to bring back so they can start, they have to do some repairs a little bit down there on the old city shop before they can store food in it, so any thoughts?
And they would take care of it.
They would take care of all the, any upgrades, any costs. We would be, wouldn't have to worry about any maintenance, so I think it just takes something off our plate that we don't have to worry about.
Because of the zoning, have you talked to the, and we brought it up at the last meeting, did you talk to the lawyer to see if we could?
I talked to, yes, I did. Sorry, I forgot to bring that up. I asked about that. I said, I just not zoned for that right now. He says he thought that we could do it, that the council could approve, kinda like an emergency. They could use that for a short period of time, set a defined timeline that they could use that.
So is this gonna be on the next, a next agenda?
I'm gonna try to get it done for the next agenda.
Make so.
But if I can get the lawyer to get it, you know, it's, it's gonna be a bit of a time to do it, but I'm hoping I can get it on the next agenda.
Good.
So, any other questions or comments or concerns about something like that?
No, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. The shop's gonna be sitting empty otherwise pretty much, so why not utilize it and help them out?
And if they're willing to do the, to do what they have to do to get in there and then take over the utilities and everything, that's.
Yeah, and they're serving so many, I mean, just besides Tenino, they're helping people from Yon, Bucota. They said, she mentioned she's, there's a lot of people in Bucota, so they're, not just Tenino, they're serving our whole South County and helping people out, so I think it'd be a great thing if we can do it to, to help them.
Don't they serve the Tenino School District?
Yes.
Yeah, and they do seniors, they do senior meals, and so they, they're really helping out in our communities.
They feed like, something like thirty kids a, a Friday during the summer from Bucota alone.
Yeah, that's, that's amazing.
I'm surprised to hear that Yon's coming down here. They've got their own.
Yeah, I don't know if people, there's some, yeah. It's mostly, it's not as many people, I don't think, from Yon, but she says they do occasionally get people from Yon coming in down here, and I don't, I don't know the reasons behind it, but.
Robin Rudy is sitting up there going, oh, my God, look what I started. Yeah, and she started it nineteen eighty-four.
What is going on?
Well, I, I agree with George Sharp here, how important that is to our community. We're, we're in the lower economic sector of the county, and we have a lot of struggling families, and I think it's the entire community's benefit that we don't have hungry, desperate people
Yeah.
in our community. The, the letter from George Sharp, I think that's important. The public sees that. Is that something we can add to the agenda, even if it's after the fact?
Yep, and what was I gonna say? I lost it.
That's your age.
That's my age. This, I wasn't anything that was super important, but, yeah. Okay, so that was that.
Before we vote yes on this later on, there's several of us that might be conflict of interest because we qualify.
Yeah, oh, I know what I was gonna say. I think, I think everybody knows.
Senior citizens now.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't qualify for food bank.
I was just gonna remind everybody, it doesn't really matter in this case so much, but that food bank was built with a grant, so we did not, the city did not spend money on that, and it was built specifically for the food bank, so just something to keep in mind. We're talking about, you know, giving them a great deal on it. We didn't, it wasn't, it was grant money that built that, that facility there, so.
The cold storage.
The cold storage part of it, yeah. Mr. Champagne's here. Hi. Nice to see you. Do you wanna have a, your conversation? You're, you're on the agenda for the work session if you wanna come up and here and speak into the microphone. Make sure the light is on. If you push the button at the bottom, if the light's not on, so people can hear you.
How's that?
Yep.
Okay, so this is a little continuation from last week. Dave, I know you weren't here. We were talking about two, two issues on the permit for my sign that came up, and, and more of a red flag for all of the businesses that will experience this. Number one was that when we made our applicant, just a review, just recapping what happened last week, that when I applied for the permit for my sign, there was no indication of what that permit fee was going to cost. I assumed a couple hundred dollars. It was like nine hundred and sixty-one. And so first, I was really shocked by that, but I was in a hurry, gotta get this office open. We were behind schedule, so I just said, okay, and we got an email that said we were fully approved, finally, after some back and forth in six weeks, and my sign guy said he couldn't install it until we were, you know, got the permit. So when it said fully approved, I forwarded that to him. He got the thing scheduled, got it put on right away. I hadn't yet come pick up the permit, and I didn't realize that I had to pay, and I knew I had to pay for the permit at some point. There was no indication that paying and picking up the permit before the work was done was absolutely required, and I was fined another eight hundred and ninety-six dollars. So two thousand dollars for a sign before the sign is installed, which also cost me five thousand dollars. So I brought the issue up. Almost everybody agreed something's a little off here. There's a little lack of, not intentional by anybody, but there's a lack of forewarning on those messages. The permit, the, the permit application should say right there what kind of fees we're looking at, or that it's where it's based on, so someone could even look it up. And there should be a forewarning, I think, on the, you're fully approved, but don't do this until, you're warning, big red letters, come in and pick it up before, or you could be subject to a fine. So I am, had, came here yesterday. We had some good discussion, and where we left things were, we were gonna, somebody here was going to look into, where is this permitting fee? Maria had mentioned that, do you wanna come up, Maria? She had mentioned that at some point we had adopted the permitting schedule from Thurston County, but nobody knows what that is or where that is, and so there was gonna be some looking into of that. I don't remember who, if anyone.
Well, I thought you talked about Brian.
Brian had offered.
Saying he was going to.
Yeah, and I don't have Brian's number. I asked John. John didn't have it either, and I don't know if anyone's heard from Brian on this, but he seemed really like.
You know, you, we must.
I haven't heard from him. I don't know.
I know, but you must have his number.
I have his number, yeah. I don't, but I don't, I haven't heard anything from him personally that said, I've looked into it, and.
Oh.
I, I, I think I might, I have a suggestion for the actual applying for the permit, and when you come in to apply for the permit, and a list of things that you need to be done before you could start the work.
A checklist.
And a signature of the person.
Acknowledging that they are aware of these things.
That they already know that this is what they need to do.
I think that'd be great. I think that would be.
I think that would solve a lot of problems of people not understanding how the system works.
Right.
I can a little bit answer your question about the fee. I don't know, I would hope that we'd have that fee schedule someplace where people could see it, but I know when we hired them to do our building inspection work, they also do Rainier in Bucota. I think they do Bucota too. I know they do Rainier.
Who's they?
Brian, Brian.
Oh, right, yeah.
LG.
LG and Brian.
But even he didn't know where that, that permitting fee came from. He said, Dave, this doesn't make any sense to me, and I'm gonna look into this. Now, that was just what he told me he wanted to do. Sincerely, he didn't like how high it was and that it wasn't disclosed ahead of time, so he wanted to look into it. He was under no obligation to do that. He was just doing it, and I, this might have been premature to come back here without finding that. Did you find anything on it?
So you're.
Make sure you speak into the microphone, so we can, don't wander on and throwing things at you.
Sorry. I know. Okay, so on the fee, on the fee schedule or on the application, so there's a plan review fee from STJ Alliance that was charged at seven hundred and fifteen dollars, and I have an invoice from STJ Alliance that it was actually significantly much more than that, but that's the amount we. And I have an invoice from STJ Alliance that it was actually significantly much more than that, but that's the amount we, we charged him. Mr. Champagne. The plan review fee is the building official fee. That is the fee from LG. Now LG gets his fees from the Thurston County adopted fee schedule, okay? And that was ninety-eight dollars and fifty-four cents. There's a city fee of forty dollars. That's on our consolidated fee schedule, that, under resolution, we've agreed for that every year. There's a signed permit fee of ninety dollars. That is on the consolidated fee schedule for the city of Tonino. The state building code fee is twenty-five dollars. That is charged to every commercial project in the city. And then there is a tech fee of two and a half percent based on the total amount of the fee, and that was two dollars and twenty-five cents. That total came to nine sixty-one seventy-nine. That is where the, the fees arrive from for this permit.
Who was the first one, seven hundred what?
That was, that was the, everything else kinda sounded about that. It was that first one.
Yeah.
STJ Alliance.
And so STJ Alliance, and there's a letter from STJ Alliance here that says, I just had it. Daniel Wyman?
That's my operations manager.
Okay, so Daniel Wyman received a letter from STJ Alliance in November twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four, in response to the applications submitted with concerns to the C-one zoning in the historic preservation. So because of the, the building itself and the location of it, it had to go to STJ Alliance for additional consideration beyond, beyond our building officials' scope of work.
Cause it's a historic building?
Because it's a historic building.
Oh.
Okay, and Mr. Champagne and his company was notified of that in November of twenty twenty-seven. Now, there is no cost because it's an hourly rate. So however many hours it takes to correspond and get the appropriate documents back and forth, which in this case was ten and a half hours of correspondence that STJ.
So they charged seventy dollars an hour?
For ten hours to respond, to look at my drawing and respond to it, guys, that sounds like a bad end of dead mark.
Well, I, I think maybe we would need to understand better the process they go through. Maybe that they have to contact the State Historical Society or, or other agencies, or who knows?
And that is information I don't have because I don't work for STJ.
Right, sure.
So, but we could dig into that. That would be a better understanding of their, their collective amount. But that is, and like I said, I didn't have their invoice at the time we prepared his bill. I was quoted a few hours, from four to five hours, from STJ when we spoke to them, when Jen and I did. And so we went at the rate that is, an estimated rate, and we came up with seven hundred and fifteen dollars, which is more than half as much as they actually charged the city for his plan review. It was significant.
So they charged the city of Tonino even more than they're asking me to pay?
And that's, that's not the concern here. The concern is your permit, I would say.
Well, that's, it's a pretty big concern to us, if we're paying it.
It is, but that's a city problem. We're trying to deal with Mr. Champagne's concern right now, and so.
It's all hand in hand.
So first of all, I wanna thank Maria for digging in and finding out where all those fees came from. And everything that's on that list right there, that wasn't on the permit application we got back. It was shown to us, and I have it somewhere, you probably saw it before it was written over and wiped out.
You probably got one like, look like this.
Yeah, two hundred and forty-six dollars is what we were shown. So my concerns are certainly personal, but also as an ambassador of this town, bringing in business, I don't want the next business to be surprised by these numbers. Also, if I had no horse in this race, you guys are getting hosed. These fees are unbelievable, and they're unnecessary. And I would, if, if you were gonna tell me it was gonna be nine hundred dollars, I'd be happier to know that some local person was getting that nine hundred dollars to do this job than of being outsourced to STJ Alliance, who, I just think that somebody needs, I mean, we're tightening the belt everywhere. I know the financial constraints that we've got. I also know that the staffing, understaffed is, is, is a big part of the problem. Now, I'm not telling you all how to do your jobs, but I don't wanna see you guys taking, having to pay these kinds of fees. That makes me sad, that I'm paying this much money and you guys are paying additional money?
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that.
And, and I'm just one guy, but, you know, we have other businesses coming. I know that Get Fit is under a temporary occupancy permit, from what I've heard.
They are?
They are.
Yeah.
Get Fit is under a temporary occupancy until they can get their striping for their parking lot done in the spring.
Oh, okay.
But that is the only thing that is holding them, is their striping in their parking lot.
So do I understand what made this cost extraordinary was that it's a historical building? And maybe, maybe that is something that, that applicants should be aware of. Do you know, or can you guess what it would have been if it had been a non-historical building, put up a sign?
I would imagine it would have been more of the two to three hundred dollars, cause the whole STJ part of it would have not been as relevant in the situation.
Right.
I mean, I sure understand that there's someone who should be responsible for making sure that a historic building is held to the aesthetic. But to, for seven hundred dollars for someone to go, yeah, that's good. There were no, I mean, they did ask us to resubmit our drawing, which was nuts, cause our drawing was a beautiful photo rendering with exactly the way the letters were gonna look, superimposed, like I had it done in Photoshop. It looked amazing.
Did they give a reason for?
No, they didn't give us a reason. They said, we need this resubmitted, and we need three copies of it. Like, okay, first of all, what we emailed you, you could print three times. So I was gonna ask, I mean, I, I'm like, what do you want? And I was starting to get a little hot under the collar, and my assistant's like, don't worry about it, it's just bureaucracy. Just, we'll send it in again, this time we'll draw some dimensions on the building. So we did that, and we sent it in. They didn't even ask for that, we just did it. And then the next thing I know, it was approved. Okay, so they did this twice, and then approved it. Because it's a, we did, we didn't, no one told us to do this. We just instinctively wanted to create a sign that is something that could stay on that building forever, even when we're gone, cause that's what we wanted to do. And so anyway, lot going on here. And what she just wrote down, it, it explains the schedule. But it wasn't real forthcoming, it wasn't real transparent, and even if legally, that's all something someone could do research and find, I don't think that's fair to put on the average business coming into town, trying to get a permit.
Right.
So I think to, to simplify my part of this, I hope that you guys come up with a procedure to, like, like, whoever suggested putting it on the outgoing checklist here, you're applying for a permit.
And you're gonna sign it, so you know everything you've got to do.
Right.
Everything should be there, what it's gonna cost, everything.
Right.
So you can make up your mind whether you wanna go ahead with it.
The hard part is if it's something, it involves STJ, you're not gonna be able to, you're gonna, you can maybe do it in a guesstimate, but how would you know, depending on the project? There's some fees that are just kinda fixed that you can identify, but the ones that are very old.
I wonder if, if Chris had that same problem with them, in the, in the buildings that he fixed up.
Heard anybody say anything about.
Cause they're all in that same historic district. Like the old newspaper office.
So it seems to me the, well, two issues. One is the amount of money, and the other one is transparency here. Perhaps STJ could be asked to break that down, that seven hundred dollars, and show us how that's being spent, and if they had to make phone calls and, and the rest of that. It, it may be legitimate.
Yeah, there, there may be something that says that that, that's a contribution to the historical society, but it's not mentioned anywhere. I mean, that's incredible, I think.
So if we get maybe an explanation from STJ to, to explain that, and, and more transparency for applicants that in a historic building, you may be subject to their high, high permit fees.
Unfortunately, every encounter that I've had with STJ has been after the fact, because it's based on their hourly assessment, right? Like however many hours it takes them to do the work. There's not a fixed rate other than the hourly rate for the employee who is assigned to the project. But how many hours it's going to take them to do the review, they just don't know until they get into it.
And that's a hard thing to ask a business owner, to, to have an open ended.
It is. It absolutely is. And so I, I don't have a.
That's a hard, that is the hardest part, yeah.
I, I don't have a, an avenue for that.
The main question that I have for STJ is why did it take so long?
Yeah.
This, this is, this whole area has been on historical society list for, I think it was right after the turn of the century, when, when it was brought to us and the council approved it. I was here. I'm old. But just to pick up a piece of paper and look at it and say, that while you're on the, you're a part of the historical site, you gotta do this, this, and this, seven hours? It makes absolutely no sense.
Do you have, is there a plaque on that building?
A what?
A plaque?
There's no historical designation that I'm even aware of, although obviously it's a, it's a, I think nineteen ten.
Historic district is, is where.
It's, yeah, it's a district. Not all the buildings have a clock. I think there's only about three.
Could I ask a question that I need a little clarity on? There was someone that worked here in, I think, permitting or building, building department, Rain, Rainy? And what I've been told by a bunch of people, in a little different version in every story I heard, is he was working here. He's not working here anymore because the city couldn't afford him. Was it at that point that we got SGA Alliance on board? No.
This is a whole separate.
And he couldn't do this. He couldn't, he wasn't certified for doing commercial.
He only could do residential stuff.
Although he was working on becoming certified.
Okay.
But STJ is kind of more, the building inspector kinda physically goes out and checks stuff when building's going on. SGA does more review to make sure engineering things are done right, and so it's kind of a whole separate, it always has been for some time.
And we have to have.
I, I believe we do, I think.
It was suggested to me that I argue the point that this is not a sign like Heddons or the Eagles where it's all out and hanging and illuminated. I mean, there's no engineer needed for lettering on a building. You could almost call it decor. And I could make that argument.
I mean, when we do the facade and premises, is that, do we have, do people have to get permits to do any of that, or have they?
I don't think so.
Which is interesting. I mean, I guess it depends on what you're doing.
You know, there's engineering, and then there's engineering. No, no, you're not holding up the building with that. But it has to be certain that it's not gonna fall off on a pedestrian, and, and specifying the anchor bolts or the bolt size or whatever, you know, that's still a form of engineering.
It's like foam and glue.
Hours worth of, of work on their part, you know, that's nonsense.
But still, it's a engineering review, and if it's an easy review, cause it's foam, yes.
But point being, that if any one of us at our homes was getting a permit, and we were given this, we'd be like, what are you talking about? So why should it be any different for our businesses? And I'm going way beyond myself here, cause I'm, I'm happy to pay the permit fee. I don't, I'm, I would like to know how much more the city had to pay on top of that, because I think this company's ripping us off.
We can, we can look into it.
I think that should be. Anyway, the, the, the second issue, of course, was the fine and fee for having the work done. I understand that went against the rules, rules I wasn't completely aware of. When I got an email that said my permit was fully approved, I was off to the races. I mean, I didn't think I was gonna stiff the city, they'd know where to find me. And I do understand, that just needs to be more transparent.
Yeah, the, the reason that, that we need the person to pick up the permit is because we have people that walk around and look at things that are being constructed, and look to see if they have a permit hanging there. And if they don't, they come back on the city. I found this out later.
So your green placard, which would be your permit, when it's paid for and issued to, would be posted in your front window, while your work was being done, so that anybody going by would be able to see the green placard in your front window and know that you do have a, a permit with the city, and it is on file.
And not being a civil servant inside of the building department, I would have no way of knowing that.
I understand, no, no.
And, and nobody else would either.
Something that needs to be.
On that paper.
Yes, yes.
So I would be happy to conclude my part of this by saying, I would like to pay for the permitting fee as assigned. I would like to request that the city look into this company and what they're doing and what they're charging, cause I think that sounds egregious to me. You can call it whatever you want, but just because it's a historical building, they didn't do a damn thing but look at my picture and say like and approve, and they wanna charge ten hours for that? That is awful. So, there's that. I would like to request that we waive the penalty, as I've been in here twice to argue my case, and we all agree there could have been better transparency on this, and there should be for the future. So I would like to see if that could be done, and if you could vote on that. I know you did once, but that was before we had these lengthy conversations.
I, I don't know that we can, because it's the, isn't, isn't that part of LG?
It is.
So the city is not getting that penalty.
So who is LG now? Cause I've been hearing SGA Alliance.
LG Nelson is our plan reviewer.
And when you say our, does he work for the city?
No.
He's contracted for the city.
So many moving parts. He's contracted, and, and he's your reviewer, reviewing what for what?
Building permits, both residential and commercial.
And that would include signed permits?
Yes. He's the person who signs, this, this is him, right here. He's the person who actually signs the permit at the very bottom.
Okay.
LG Nelson.
So he doesn't issue the approval letters that I got, right? That came from within the building department?
I emailed you your congratulations letter.
Right.
Yes.
Thank you. And, but, so he is responsible for assessing the penalty for not doing it in the right order?
That's my understanding.
Yes.
Does he have an appeal process? Can he be contacted? Can this be discussed with him?
That is a great question that I will have to ask of that contracted individual.
Okay. I mean, I just feel like we've come this far, and I hate to just drop this and say, oh, screw it, I'm gonna pay it, because that's how they get ya. They wait till you're tired, and you just don't wanna go any further. And I, and I'm, and I'm gonna see this through as far as I can. I mean, I'm this close to going back and retroactively reapplying this permit as this is lettering. This wasn't a sign, it didn't have any electricity, it didn't have any bolts, it was a glued-on foam sign that, you know, you know, I don't wanna play the game. I want people to be a little bit accountable for common sense. Now, if I can, and, and I, I'm the aggrieved party here, I'm the one that's arguing this. I wouldn't mind contacting LG Nelson and having a conversation and saying, do you have an appeal process for this? And I don't want anyone here to get in trouble. I certainly don't want Maria to get in trouble for this. This wasn't a policy to warn people about this. It's not something I'm even challenging the law on. If it's the code, it's the code, and that's, you know, the way it is.
Right.
But we, if we're not a town that is going to stand up for new businesses and make this more transparent and easy, then what are we doing here? Cause we're, we're not gonna get out of the hole financially by just tightening the belt, laying people off. We need to bring money into this town, and this isn't the way to do it. So I don't know where that leaves us on this, except to say, I'd like to, a continuance on the subject for one more fortnight.
Okay.
Where I can have a chance to talk to LG, you gotta.
So I do remember one piece here. So in Brian and LG did direct me to the international construction codebooks, which is another thing.
The universal code?
State code.
Yes. And so, and there was, there is a rule in their administrative section, which is one oh nine point four, work commencing before permit issuance. Any person who commences any work before obtaining the necessary permit shall be penalized and shall be in the addition to the required permit fees. So there is administrative guidance in those codebooks that they can issue these penalties. That is where they got their authority to do so.
They don't have to. Is that what you're saying? Is it a law?
Shall, shall.
It says shall. Shall.
Doesn't say will. Doesn't say shunt. I mean, I think that it's worth a conversation, and in the next two weeks, if someone here would take responsibility for contacting STJ Alliance and really finding out why seven hundred and what?
Why even more than that?
And they said there were a number of hours. Did they list the number of hours, or we don't even know that?
I thought you said.
Ten and a half hours, guys. And I also wanna know, how much did the city of Tonino have to pick up on top of that?
Yeah, me too. I think we all do, wanna know how much it is.
Who even knew that? Did you know? Who even knew that, did you know, did they tell you that?
I do, yes.
Do you know how much?
Yes.
You wanna tell us?
With your permission.
That's, I mean, it's public information.
It was over sixteen hundred dollars.
Good lord.
How much?
It was over sixteen hundred dollars.
Total?
I, I believe sixteen sixty-nine was the amount.
Total amount and then the, then the, opt take the seven, that's still, that's still more money than we can afford.
Yeah.
Okay, so with that sixteen hundred dollars, do we get billing, did they list hours, the principals and, and secondaries who are working on that?
Yep.
Does that match up, is this separate, we, and you, you-
We can pull the bill we got so we can see exactly what they charged.
Do they have different people doing this or, or is there double billing for?
Nope, it's all one person, um, it was one, uh, employee at SCJ that billed for it all ten and a half hours that was assigned to this task.
So billed Tenino ten and a half hours and billed Mr. Champagne ten and a half hours, both?
It was-
No.
The ten and a half hours was associated to his permit.
Right.
But it was not du-
Done twice.
Done twice, no.
See, it was the same ten and a half hours that you guys, so we don't know how much per hour or do we know how much per hour?
Well, if it's sixteen hundred dollars and for ten hours, how much is that?
About a hundred and seventy bucks an hour probably.
Yeah, that's a lot of money for one employee.
Okay, I'm confused, does the sixteen hundred dollars include the seven hundred dollars?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So we paid a thousand, he paid us seven hundred, it sounds like, are just rounding numbers, yeah?
Yes.
See, I know, I know and I'm, I'm with you guys, you're understaffed, we're under, we all say we, it's our city, we're understaffed, I get that. If you had room in the budget for one more part-time person, you could earn money back if you developed a, I don't know, let's call it a Department of Government Efficiency perhaps, where someone could look, I'm sure if, I'm sure if we're too understaffed to notice these kinds of things coming through and question it, and it's not Maria's job to do it, it's no one's one person's job to do this. But if there was somebody to look over what you guys are being charged in for what, like there's a sweet, a street sweeper coming past my office like twice a week, it's adorable. I don't know what that's been paid for, I mean, there's oversight. I don't know if you have an oversight person, we don't even have really a clerk treasurer, so-
We have five oversight people in the city, actually.
Is, is, is it here?
Yeah, but we're not, we're not in tune with the everyday working of the city hall.
And that's why we have an executive doing the day-to-day, that's how we're set up.
That's why what?
We have an executive, the mayor, to get that information to the council.
I'll take, I'll take, I'll take the heat, I mean, we haven't had complaints before, I mean, we rarely have complaints about, uh, so it's kinda catches me off-
It's my specialty.
Yeah. I'm more than willing to look into this case, but I mean, unless somebody brings your attention and says, hey, this doesn't seem right.
If you ask my wife, I spend more money and overpay for stuff on a constant basis. There's things I should return, I'm too busy, I waste money and I feel guilty about it because, you know, but I wanna, I figure if I slow down to do this, I'm not going out and making the money I need to. This is different. This is throwing money out the window and it's not being questioned and we do need to question it.
Well, that's the whole point, it needs to be questioned.
Think we need to have them come down here and explain this.
We'll, we'll make contact with them and see what, yeah, I'll get the bill and just see.
I'll bring my pitchforks and torches.
Excuse me?
I'll bring my pitchfork and torches if you bring them down. I'm just glad that this is being brought up so we can look into it. I will call LG Nelson and see if I can do anything about that penalty.
Good.
Um, if not, if not, but let, I'd like to, you know, freeze frame this for the next two weeks while we reach out to SCJ Alliance, I think they should be accountable for what they're charging and, and-
Yeah.
I mean, whoever's the most pit bull of you needs to talk to them and say, you know, we're representing an entire city here, you gotta explain why you're charging this much money. There may be somebody else you can hire who's more reasonable. Um, I know things cost money, now I understand also this wasn't because we were understaffed, this was somebody you trusted to do a job, just sounds crazy to me. This wasn't a refacing the edifice of a historical building.
Well, I think that it's just, yeah, that, that, that's the part.
We'll look into it, like you said, we'll come back in two weeks.
All right, thank you.
We'll get with SCJ, we'll, I'll talk to them, hand them in for other things, we can look at the bill and, and we'll come back in two weeks and maybe have-
And again, I wanna thank Maria for really putting herself on the line to get the figures and facts and, and do that work. I know she has a different job title than all that, so thank you.
Well, I don't know, it's just one of them.
Yeah. Yeah, I heard there's a long list, but-
Yeah, there is.
Um, before I step out, there was one kind of related idea I had that I wanted to share with you guys. Wayne Fornier came to the Chamber of Commerce meeting and he talked about the upcoming vacancies or, on the city council. And he made an impassioned plea to that room that we need to really get to work and find dedicated people to replace anybody who's leaving on the city council because, I mean, we need every one of you. We need everybody here and we need the best people we can get, and I know there's people who care about this town. But I don't think that word's getting out. And, um, I mean, I have an idea and I don't know how y'all feel about it. I was wondering if my company could host a Q and A night with the city council folks where they will have a chance to talk to some local people here who might consider running for city council or might know someone who would be a real asset to city council. But the number one question I get, I, I mean, I get like three basic questions when I talk about people who could go out for city council. Things like, do I have to live within city limits because I live outside of city limits, you do have to live there.
It's a law.
Yeah, that, that really limits it, but the next question is, how much time do I have to devote? Because I'm really busy and that sounds like it could be a nightmare.
That's, that's one of those questions that you actually have to have a face-to-face sit down with.
And that's good, I like the idea of having a question-answer, I don't know about anybody else, but I think it's a great idea.
That Chamber of Commerce already said that I'd be, I'd be more than happy to help sit down with people.
Me too.
Well, the problem is, the Chamber of Commerce is a very limited group of people. If I hosted something, I would pack a room for you with everybody we could.
As long as I live in the city, I don't care, I'll talk to them.
I love that, I love that. Now, the other thing is, a lot of people have the impression that this is a, a time-consuming, painful, unpleasant process with no reward in it, and I know that's not true.
No, it's not.
I mean, I know that if I, you know, all of you have your list of complaints and burdens and this kinda work, they call it the slow boring of hardwood because it's a slow process.
And I'm working full-time during the session and I, I look forward to the council meetings, I enjoy this, this is good, you know.
Well, that's what people wanna hear. And I'm sure all of you have success stories and things you're very happy that you saw may come to fruition and, and some fulfillment out of this job. And it's, it's something that you don't get enough credit for, it's a very thankless job. But if we could get a room full of people and everyone could share, I mean, I don't, I'm not saying whitewash it. It's a challenging job and you should be able to share what your frustrations, what your challenges are, what things you hope will be changing in the future, who, who all is, knows for sure they're leaving in this? Okay, well, I thought there were three, were there three vacancies or three elections?
There's three elections, you know, yeah.
Okay. Who's, who's up for, who's the third one up for?
Linda.
You gonna, you gonna run again?
I haven't made up my mind.
Okay. Well, maybe you should come to this meeting and hear yourself and see if you're inspired.
I will, I'll be there, I'll be happy to be on the panel.
Um, how many of you would be willing to come to that Q and A and share your experiences, John, Linda, Jeff?
I think we all would.
I would love it. And, and it won't be a chamber council meeting, it'll be hopefully in a good-sized room with a lot of people. I wanna maybe get, bring in some food, you know, make it a party, let, let it be a fun festive atmosphere. When is the filing deadline for running?
May.
Oh, Quorum, yeah.
Sometime, I, I know.
Around the fifteenth or seventeenth of May. Yeah, I think so, I think you're, oh, I turned, I turned my phone.
Only, only two of us could be there, otherwise we have a quorum.
Only two of you can be there?
Yeah, you can't hold anybody together.
We can, we can make a special-
We can look into it, I mean, we've been to other things and we're not talking business.
When we have a council retreat, we're all there.
And it wouldn't be a bad idea to have that publicized, to have it, you know.
I'll publicize the hell out of it.
I think that we can make an exception.
To, to have it recorded.
We can make an exception.
To make it public.
To make it public, so that people who are there can get the video and see the results.
What we have to do is find out when it is and then it has to be brought up at council before that, before the event.
Send it up, I'm there.
Okay.
Okay. We'll figure out the details, but I'd love to have all of you there. I promise that it'll be worth this city's while to have each one of you weigh in on the positives, the negatives, inspire some people to get involved, you, I'll bet you they think it's something it isn't, like I did. So, um, I would love that and maybe even one day, um, uh, I could volunteer my services as a business ambassador where I can help when new businesses are coming to town, you know, let them know what to expect and what's going on. Every town has its linesides. Filling in the gap, making people, making businesses feel welcome would be great. City, did I say town?
It's not a town, it's a city.
I'm sorry, how much do I owe you, every time I say town, someone's gotta say, John.
And when he's not here anymore, we're gonna miss that.
Well, somebody else has to be that person.
Nobody's gonna correct him.
All right.
Can we get moving, we got some other things we need to, I need to-
Yeah, I'm done, thank you guys for your time and I'll reach out to you about possible dates for this. I'd like to pick a date that you're all available. Okay, thanks guys.
Thanks, Dave.
Uh, these things won't take much time. Library, we did have a conversation in the library about selling that building, they're taking it back to their, to their, whoever, their board, whoever their board is, uh, uh, I thought they were gonna come back and say, we wanted to do this over four or five years or something, you know, pace or, kinda like we did with the fire station, but they seem to think they have the cash to, if they decide they wanna do this, to just pay us for it, so we'll soon hopefully come back with the, the possible sale of the library building.
Sounds better for them because they won't have interest then.
Yeah. Uh, we are gonna be posting for the clerk treasurer position, we had some discussion about timing just getting the other person on board, but we just, I decided, let's just post it, get the application started, so hopefully we'll get some applications in soon to start looking at. I did ask them to post it saying that it's open until filled, so we get, you know, two weeks and we have some good candidates we can interview, but if they're not, just keep it open so anybody can apply and not have to go back and open it up, close it and then open it up again. Just keep it open until we find the right person for the job. We did the interviews for the utility clerk, they picked the top three, the, looking at the applications, it looks like some pretty good candidates. I mean, I have already called them to schedule a interview with them, I just wanna sit down and, and talk to all three of them to make sure, uh, just to hear from them from my perspective. So we'll be, hopefully by next week, I'm hoping, kinda have a person picked. I think they're all employed, so there may be, they may have to give notice like we wouldn't typically. But, uh, I'm hoping to get that one filled, that's really a critical one, it's just there's so much going on and the other people are trying to fill in, so I wanna get that thing filled and start getting them trained so they can take over that kind of, that, that work. Uh, on another point, because our employees have been picking up, they've been incredible, honestly. I mean, the work that they've done to try to keep us, keep us going and taking on multiple tasks.
I can see their heads going like this.
Yeah. Uh, I, I checked on our attorney with this and if there's any heartburn about it, but I am going to offer them a more, a little more pay during this transition where they're taking on these extra duties because they deserve it.
It's only temporary.
It's temporary till we get these people on board and they can start doing their job. So, I wanna say personally, I appreciate so much that all of you have been doing to get this done because we could, we would be in a bad spot if you hadn't stepped up and I appreciate it very much and you deserve that extra compensation while, while you're taking on those responsibilities. So thank you so much for that, I appreciate it.
Nice dinner, man.
Uh, that is kinda the big ones I had, uh, like I said, I've only been back a couple days and there's a lot of stuff on the table when I came back in, so if I miss something, I will bring it back. But, uh, I think those were the, kinda the big, big things going on right now that, uh, I wanted to pass on. So we got a few minutes, any questions about anything or comments?
I had a thing that Troy asked me to-
Okay.
Bring up. The admin get a comp time of one day per month. And they can accumulate it, if they don't take it, they lose it.
Hold your microphone to your face, microphone.
Your microphone, get it, get it closer to you.
But for Troy, it's not possible for him to take a day off in July, August and September because he's too busy-
And we have to.
With everything. So, could he spread hit those three days out to other months? And maybe take two days here and there instead of one?
I would think I would have some ability to make exceptions, I don't know what, what our rules say, but it's, it's just kinda common sense that we have, I know the policy probably, you want it, you don't want people building up ten, ten days or something. That's the idea behind this.
And that's what I told him, that that was the idea behind it.
If you don't have the rule, somebody's gonna accumulate five days or ten days and it's just gonna cause chaos with time on. I would hope that we would have the ability, I would have the ability to say, hey, there's an exception here, it's a busy time of the year, you can't take off and just be aware, myself being aware, uh, I don't know how the council feels about that. It seems like an administrative thing that-
It is.
We should be able to make, we should be able to make adjustments on things like that without a big-
Well, what is it saying, the personnel policy?
I think it says they have to take it in the city.
Admin days for department heads?
Yes.
Must be, within the month.
Yeah. That's what the current policy is.
But if they, what Elaine is saying is that like July, August-
And September.
And September, it's hard to take that day.
So I-
John, just a little bit changed it, John.
So I'm wondering if we need to change the personnel prop, policy and that's all we need to do.
I think we could still say one day because I, I would really like, I mean, ideally you take it in the, but give the flexibility for-
Right.
The mayor to make exceptions, when it makes sense is if we're gonna say something different. I, I, I just think we should just be able to do that anyway somehow, I don't, it doesn't seem like it should be that complicated, but, and it shouldn't be the norm, it should be the very exception where, you know, like you said.
Something like that, yeah.
So, we'll look, I'll look into it a little bit more and see if I just don't have the authority to do it without changing, changing the whole personnel policy on it, but if we do need to, we can just add, just add a line that says-
Troy's thing because he loses three days every year.
Yeah. Okay, I'll look into it and see if I can, he hasn't said anything to me about it. Go ahead, even wanna come up here so we can just hear. Don't scold us and then stop, stop in the back and, uh-
You could consider something like PTO, which is paid time off.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then it could be so many days acquired throughout the year and then it could be used at any point in time.
But have some limit to it.
As long as it's used before the end of the year.
Yes, that, that money or that time doesn't roll over year to year, that has to be used within that timeframe. But that would be something you could adopt or modify the, the-
I agree because it's, that's a benefit to the employee really and I've told people in the small organization, you might not always be able to pay them as much as other, but if you can do things like that that are a benefit to our employees, let's do it.
Absolutely, absolutely. And it would help with like city hall, like for the clerk treasurer and the holidays and them being closed on Monday, it's like one whole less day every week that they have to try to juggle around.
Right.
So, um, you know, it would have multiple benefits, at least I could see multiple benefits.
Help me remember, I'll write it down here, but, uh, yeah, because I'm all for trying to do things that help, that help our employees and- if we can, where we can.
Why don't we do a few, we've got about eight minutes.
Yeah, reports, uh-
I don't think there's anything for the chamber or EDC or STPA.
Or TPD and TRPC.
I went to the chamber meeting.
Okay, you wanna make a report for the chamber?
Yeah.
George usually does it.
Go ahead, do the chamber.
Um, the next meeting for the chamber will be March nineteenth and April sixteenth meeting will be an evening meeting because of those who work. So, they wanted to-
Those are a lot of fun too, they're lots of fun.
Oh, they wanted to get that information out there. Um, Wayne was the speaker at the chamber meeting and he said the lodging tax increase next year and it'll make an increase of, um, up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to share with cities.
Okay. I wonder if we are eligible for that, because in the past we haven't been eligible for lodging taxes because we don't have any lodging. So I don't know, if that, something's changed and, yeah.
We, we get it, the chamber gets it, yeah, we get it.
Oh, do they?
Yeah, yeah, we get it.
He indicated that we did.
Yeah, we do.
And he said that it, it would increase.
We do.
Uh, CGB, I don't know what that is, but it, he said that CGB funds, they're now asking for applications.
CDBG.
CDVG?
CDVG.
C.
Yeah, C, CDVG. It's count, um.
So, anyway, the county is asking for.
Community Development Block Grant, that's what it is. It's the block grants.
That might be, uh, what we just, uh, is that the one the cities do?
This year, this year.
We've already started the process.
We're, we weren't eligible last year. This year we're eligible.
Seven, three-year rotation now cuz Lacy dropped out. So, we've already started that process.
Okay, cuz she said he hadn't, the county hadn't received anything yet.
They're due like tomorrow.
Okay.
If you're gonna say something, we're gonna come up to the microphone.
The Community Development Block Grant.
Yeah, right, right.
That's already started, and there, I know two people, or two organizations that are applying. If, if they're not in, they'll be in before the deadline, at least two.
The Little Theater is this year doing a play.
Little Mermaid.
Disney's Little Mermaid.
The Little, what theater?
Tenino Young at Heart.
Our, yeah, our, yeah, okay.
I don't know exactly what their name was. They just called it the Theater.
TYT, Tenino Young at Heart Theater.
Yes.
I thought you said the Little Theater. That's why I was wondering.
Little Mermaid.
They grew up, huh?
Radiant Health comes to Tenino on Fridays, and they're using the real estate office.
That's the chiropractor.
Yes.
And that's his son. That's Dave's son that is the chiropractor.
And the stone carvers received permission for a building near the museum, and they'll be able to hold classes, et cetera, and get grants.
Are they building that building?
It's, uh, no, it's just, it, I think it's the buildings behind the museum that, I think that's what.
Those open. Well, they were looking at a little piece of triangle property over there.
Oh, were they? Or maybe.
Yeah, I, I.
What?
Zero Park Avenue.
Yeah, it's right there at the.
Oh, that little.
What an address.
Yeah, okay.
Anyway, yeah, I haven't heard. They came and just talked to me about it, but I haven't heard any further that they.
The other was the Port of Olympia, the lady representing.
Maggie.
Um, Port of Olympia, and she said they would like to hear from towns such as, and cities such as Teninos cuz they support special projects.
Yeah, we would.
We'd get grants from them every year.
We get a grant, we get a grant every year, ten thousand dollars from them.
I haven't been down there this year.
But they have, apparently, the way she was talking, they have other projects.
They're talking about.
Project grants.
It's, it was that, the ten thousand.
Just the one.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're talking about raising it. They, last year, they were talking about bumping that up a little bit, but I don't know. They made a decision.
Okay.
Okay, civil, uh, I think the other ones are not here. Civil Service Commission, uh, we're still looking for applications there, right? We have, have we got a application?
We have not received any.
For that. We did receive one for the Planning Commission, but not for, for the Civil Service Commission, so please, if you know, kinda goes back to what we were talking about earlier. People don't know what the commitment is, but if you can think of anybody that might.
How might get paid on to do that?
That one is very, I mean, they don't even meet every month. I think it's only when.
Like every two or three months, just when I met when I was on.
Facile, I guess there's nothing on that. Finance Committee hasn't met. Planning Commission, uh, he's not here. Public Safety Committee or Public Works, did either of you meet with, have any meetings? Nope.
Not, not yet.
Clerk Treasurer, are we all gonna get up there together and do the clerk treasurer report? I just wanna share with you, I did make a, where did I do with that? I wrote, scratched it on it. Here it is. I just wanted to update you on, kinda do a short report on our, all our accounts and the balances, something that I know when I was a commissioner on the Fire Department, each month they did. Here's where we started, here's what we spent, and here's where we ended. So, we have three different accounts. The court checking account started at forty-three forty-one, deposited one thousand seven hundred sixty-eight, expended two thousand two hundred. Our ending balance was three thousand nine hundred and one dollars and fifty-eight cents. Our premier checking account is the account that most of our, all our checks come out of, so all our expenses we, are bit, out of this.
We don't have checks.
Checks, well, we do have checks, so. Uh, the starting balance there was one million sixty-seven thousand, six, sixty-seven thousand dollars, seven hundred, I can't even say it right. Seven hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. Deposited two hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and expended five hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. I just wanted to point this out because this is where we have to, we, at the beginning of the year, we have all these expenses that we pay lump sums. So, that's why it's important to have some carryover at the end of December because we have significant, expend significantly, significantly more than we take in that first month. So, that account ended at seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, so we, we spent three hundred thousand more in January than we took in. The other account we have is the high yield growth. That's money that usually typically just sits there with, and gets interest. Six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. We didn't expend anything, got five hundred and sixty-two dollars, so we're up to six hundred and twenty-two thousand in that. But I just wanted, that's January, so that was that month that, where we spent all that, so I just wanted to make, kinda give you an example of how much more we're spending that first month that, than we're taking in, so that's, that's that part of the carryover. So, I just wanted to, to say that. Uh, Mayor, I was gone for two weeks, so I haven't really, everything that's.
Seven thirty.
Okay, sounds good. It is seven thirty, so we'll start our regular meeting. It's gonna be hopefully a pretty quick one. So, it's, uh, the Tuesday, February twenty-fifth meeting, the regular meeting of the city council. Please rise for the flag symbol. John, what starts?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got agenda approval, motion to approve the.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of the minutes from two eleven twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes from February eleventh, twenty twenty-five as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent cell, consent calendar. I do have an addition. When I came in, there was a, uh, application for Simply Organic Cafe and Catering Liquor License, so I'd like to add that to that, uh, consent agenda. So, the consent agenda consists of February twelfth, twenty twenty-five through February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, consisting of payroll ETFs in the amount of forty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents. Claims checks three-three zero one nine through three-three zero four one, and EFTs in the amount of sixty thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-six cents for a grand total of a hundred and five thousand, sixty-three dollars and seven cents, and the app, uh, approval of the application for Simply Organic Cafe and Catering for a liquor license.
No problem.
New liquor license.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, we have a proclamation. I think we passed this last year also.
Well, wait a minute, have you got here?
Got any this one? Executive session, we have none. Presentations, there's nobody here. Oh, public comment, sorry. Anybody wanna speak?
Okay.
Uh, no public hearings, proclamations. Uh, this is to approve a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month.
No problem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Is there any discussion? You want me to read the, should I read the, to you?
First paragraph.
Whereas the city of Tenino recognizes our future rests in the hands of our most valid, vulnerable and cherished assets, our children. Now therefore, I, Dave, Dave Waterson, Mayor of the City of Tenino, do hereby proclaim April twenty-fifth as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I will sign this and pass it down.
Yeah, we all have to sign it, don't we?
Yeah. I'll pass the same pin down, so we have the same, same color. Uh, no old business, no new business, no resolutions, no ordinances. Uh, other reports we have. Bukota be that? Anything can be that?
Yes, they've got a, their next event is next Monday, the third of March. It's gonna be in Bukota at the Bukota Community Center, and they'll be there to love, learn, and do. So, I'm not sure what, what all is, that's gonna be, but encourage everybody there in Bukota or from anywhere to go and join those folks. It's always a, always a positive thing. Um, there's a, another drug take back, but that's, that's a couple months out, and I'll have more information when it, we get close to that.
Solid ways, do you mean?
Our meeting is next week.
Okay, can, uh, you guys help me remember? I gotta call them, and they haven't been notified that she's been reappointed to that. So, I need to call and get that into, yeah. TCOM, Tenino School Board?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, uh, state wrestlers, they sent, what is it, five boys, eight girls to the state tournament?
Yeah.
It was a lot. And then, uh, so Ms. Rodriguez, she took second as a sophomore. She's the first finalist in Tenino history for female. And then Koinox and Rowdy Tafoya each took six, and Malaya Chekin also took six for the females. And then boys basketball, their first, uh, game, first day is this Saturday morning at ten.
Yeah, that's an exciting one, isn't it?
Yeah, over in Winatchee against Shalan, so.
And another.
Sports doing good.
Another, another example of competitive excellent, excellence, uh, the middle school is in the Rocket League, uh, esports Rocket League, and apparently they're undefeated nationally. They're right up there. Um, I had to ask what that is, and it's apparently a video game competition, basically soccer with, uh, uh, race cars. Hopefully I'll have a chance to, uh, to see that. Um, last, yeah, last night was the monthly Tenino School District Board Meeting, and was held at, at Parkside School. Uh, we had a presentation by, uh, Mr. Brock Williams, the principal there, on everything they do. It's very, very interesting, and it, and it highlights how important that school is to our community in getting, uh, kids started on the scholastic path. Um, they've got the PETA, what is that, PETA K, Primary to Kindergarten Program that, that provides, I had to learn all this, that, that provides young kids before they even get to school with extra help, people who, who may have trouble just starting right out of school, and it gives them a chance to, to come up to speed. Very positive program. In fact, the three-year-olds and four-year-olds did the, uh, pledge allegiance, led that. That was kinda cute. Um, oh, almost forgot. There's Perry, Penguin, Parkside Penguins, Parkside Pride. Stand up there. Oh, he's a little tired. Been up all night. It's late for those guys. We also learned there, one, one item of note from there was that the school board, uh, recognized and accommodated a couple volunteers. Carolyn Galen Wood, who are really involved in the book programs in Tenino and around our community all, all Thursday. Books for Newborns, they do that. They're involved with Head Start, and they've been doing it for years, and it, and it highlights how important it is just to get little kids reading, you know, off, off the devices and just have them read, or read to them. Um, that was all positive. Um, I'm going a little longer now because I had a, a, an opportunity to get a tour today at, at Parkside from Mr., Mr. Williams. And, uh, again, it's, it's amazing what the, they do for our, our youngest children to get, to get started there. The most important thing, he says, is get them to school attendance. Get them to school and great things happen, you know, and sometimes that's tough, you know, with, with COVID and everything. We're used to keeping kids home when they got snuffles, but if it's not, not contagious, get them to school, cuz that's, that's where all the magic happens. I just wanted to forward that message on to, uh, people, not just in Parkside, but in schools throughout our Tenino District. They have a vending machine there that vendors books, and I've never seen such a thing.
Is that that Dolly Parton program?
Yeah, the Dolly Parton program.
Yeah, and, uh, every month, each class has two, uh, students of note, and they're given a token, and they can go to that and get a book.
To get a book, yeah.
It's amazing program.
It's an amazing program.
And the kids just love it. It's very popular. So, I very much enjoyed the school, and, uh, Mr. Brock is, or Mr. Williams is, is, uh, doing a great job there according to everybody who works there.
Well, he has for how many years?
Oh, I couldn't tell you.
A long time.
Long time.
Oh, my goodness.
And his dad was a part of the school, you know, and his father just passed away.
His dad was my principal.
Yeah, last year, yeah, Hal Williams.
So, I, I hope with the end of the school year, uh, a chance to meet, uh, some of the other schools. One note also, uh, from the school district, tomorrow, Wednesday night, is the Night of Art, or a Night of Art at the high school, and I guess it's put on by students from all the schools. Um, art, music, drama, um, chance to see what our creative, uh, artistic kids are, are doing. Snacks by PTSD, so even if you don't have an interest in art, I encourage you to go there and get your juice box and cookie, and who knows, you just might actually enjoy yourself at the evening. But it'd be good to support those, those kids who have done so much. Um, other than that, um, I think that's the report.
Thank you, appreciate it. You said TRPC, there's nothing, John, and TPB?
Yeah, I already reported on.
Okay, Commissioner's Office, nothing. Public Legislature, Andrew, do you wanna say anything?
No.
I think the first deadline is passed, so there's some bills that have kinda dropped off.
Another, uh, cutoff on Friday, and there are a lot of bills, and I've talked to you guys about them before that you need to, I can't do it, so somebody needs to contact the, and they're all on the list that we get from AWC. We get a email with this list. The, the ones that are important are these, and there's several that are really, to me, important. At fifty-sixty, the law enforcement, it is for new hires, and they will cover, would cover seventy-five percent of the cost of up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand for up to three years to, so you'd have to keep the person for three years, but they, they would have, seventy-five percent of their wages would be covered by this.
Yeah, that's what I'm not so worried about. It's after that three years that we're required to still, uh, come up with that money. You know, we'd like to be able to keep them, but can we afford it?
Well, but if, if, yeah, that's, that's the thing. So, anyway.
You know, if it's required that we afford, that's a dangerous situation.
Well, it's not required. It's not required.
That's, that's the part that was important to me.
And if we look at that in light of our current budget situation, the next three years are gonna be really tough, and we pay back all the.
Help us get through that.
But after that, that money that we, we're gonna have to, and we'll still need to decide the numbers, but the money that we will have been paying for the, those three years comes back into our general fund, and, and so we'd be available to continue paying out.
Yeah, I really think it's a great bill. I think it should pass. I really do. And there's a lot of, there's a, several other ones that, like a, uh, point, ten percent sales tax for cities and towns that is a credit against the state sales tax, and half of any new revenue is for recruiting and retraining, retaining officers, and the other half is for criminal justice programs. There's several that are kind of like that in here that need, need to take a look at, so. That's my report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gonna second to you, I wasn't gonna say anything.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
For sure. Uh, public comment number two, anybody? Comments?
Wait, 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 Museum?
Oh, did I miss Museum? Where is the Museum?
I don't think it's on here anymore.
Museum, yeah. You got something for the museum, go ahead.
Anyway, I was asked to, to go and send a meeting scan. I said, sure. Uh, this last one was the first one I've, I've made, and.
What, you can't hear me back there? I don't have a big mouth anymore? Anyway.
She didn't say that.
Uh, anyway, years ago, when I was chair, we used to meet twice a month, the first and third, uh, Monday of every month. We're gonna go back to that. Uh, one of the other things is that this year is the fiftieth anniversary of the move of the museum from the other end of the city to here, and we're gonna figure out some way to incorporate into that into Oregon Trail Days, uh, do some, some, some kind of recognition. Hopefully it's a larger one. We'll see what we can do. We're down to the board members and two other members, so we need to find new members. We got a lot of people on books, but a lot of people, Lord God bless you, are aged out and, you know, they're, uh, life members, but they just can't do anything anymore, so we need to find a way to, and instill some new blood in there so that we can get a lot. blood in there so that we can get a lot more stuff done. Uh, one of the things that we do need to get taken care of is, and that's part of what the city's supposed to do, is of the, to clean out the gutters. And if the gutters are falling ba, falling down, it was nighttime, so I didn't go out and look at it, uh, to get that, that kind of stuff repaired. And apparently the gutters are in, in bad need of repair and cleaning. So if we can get that done here pretty quick.
Some volunteers then.
Yeah. Uh, also, uh, we got a, we got one bid for the roof.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, uh, with the $10,000 that the court's giving us, we're looking at about a $4,000 shortfall. I was wondering if, uh, the facade, facade facilities grant would be able to do that if that qualifies. If not.
It's not, it's not in the budget yet.
Okay, well.
I think Jessica said something about the friends of Tenino, somebody that she was.
Friends of Tenino, the park?
I think so. I think she was going to say.
Well, if not, I've got a couple of other places that I can go to.
You know, like the Lions Club and the, um, uh, the Chamber.
Jessica seemed to have some idea where she could get the money.
Yeah, like they said.
We'll let Jessica work on it.
I've got some other places that I can go to, to get that as well. Uh, for example, the Enterprise Services, I talked with, with, uh, their representative at the chamber meeting, and, uh, he seems to think that we may be able to get that because it's not that much. It's only be four or five thousand dollars more. And the idea is that once we get this replaced, it, because it's going to be a metal roof, it's going to be fifty, sixty a year before it has to be done again. So it's money well spent.
We won't have to worry about it.
That's right. Won't have to worry about, the only thing we have to worry about is cleaning the gutters again. Uh, another thing that I've talked to PSC about is coming in and doing, uh, an evaluation on the lighting that's there and to see if we can get some new lighting and, uh, more efficient, more energy efficient. Uh, so we'll, we'll, I talked to the PSC girl at the steady meeting and she's going to forward the information on to me and we'll go from there. Uh, also, what else was there? We'll stop right there because I can't remember what the, what the last point was. Thank you.
Yep. Public comment two. Anybody want to speak? Nope. The announcements. You think you got announcements?
Oh, I want to announce, you get that one. The, um, Mr. Jim Gardner, uh, World War II veteran, a hundredth birthday, is going to be at the Eagles on Saturday from one to four. And he's a resident, he was a resident at Tenino.
Yeah.
One last thing. We have the sign out in the front lawn here. Don't forget to grab the, so you go, you go to the celebration and then we go have some crab.
I know. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna donate forty-five dollars.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we're here.
Non-debatable motion.
I don't hate it.
Thank you all.
Last one.
Great crab feed for the, uh, fast pitch baseball.
Oh.
They are.
I'll call you.
They are an engineering firm, so and then something has to be engineered.
Social services.
Was that at the Eagles?
Yeah, and it was for a good.
Yeah, I could turn that.
Thirty-five dollars for a whole crab and a baked potato. I could only eat half. I took half home to my daughter, but it was good crab.
Well, that's good. Yeah.
Yes, compared to our, our building officials. Then we actually go out and inspect and make sure that, so that's.
I wasn't aware of that.
Okay.
So like when we try to add, they did all the engineering, water systems, you know, the electrical system.
Not to turn it off.